Six thirty, four and a half, we'll start the meeting.
Reporting in progress.
All right. Any need for, so we do, we have a few executive?
I have one which is personnel related to the highway department.
Oh, that was mine as well. It might be the same thing.
I think so. I think I've heard that you've heard some things from that.
All right. Anybody else have anything?
Nope.
Okay. You need to make a motion to go an executive, right? No?
I'll move if we do, yeah.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we, we do need to amend the agenda with COVID updates and coin drop for the fire department. Is there anything else?
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, anything on the minutes of last meeting? Let's see, anything?
How do you sign on bottom, John, my name here?
Is it on the next page there, Joe? Could be, I think so. Do, do. There you go.
Wake up.
Anything on the orders?
Well, I see they had a twenty-four hundred dollar expenditure on one of the five fifty trucks there, highway garage. Says Brayton, looks like it was Brayton job, I guess. It must be they did a pretty thorough, complete, break overall for that money.
Is that, that's Earl's, right?
That's surprise.
They can never get enough information on that order. Earl's truck repair. Replaced RT rear, right rear springs and installed bigger overloads, removed and replaced U-bolts and torqued, reinstalled wheels and torqued, checked AC system. Everything seemed to be fine. Removed and measured Freon R134A, needs 1.63 pounds. It had 2.09 pounds. Plugged truck into computer and found a code for low voltage or circuit open on sensor A, which is on the passenger side, front of truck and air filter box. Replaced AC pressure, recharged AC.
Coener up.
Looks like somebody added some Freon to it at some point. It had a little overfall.
So it sounds like, yeah.
Well, 1.62, it, it doesn't grow in the system.
No.
Unless somebody puts it in.
We'll get the investigators on it.
John, the watershed taxes, is that for access to Nick Wackett?
No, that's our town forest block in the town of Chittenden. We have 290 acres and I think they charge us based on the ridge. Part of the parcel is west of the ridge, a part of the parcel is east of the ridge.
Oh, that's why it's in two different chunks.
It's contiguous, I think so.
Oh, I think that's in the current use program.
That's correct. So we have much cheaper than it could be.
Okay.
That's for sure.
When Alan was on the board, we kind of switched that stuff around.
You enrolled it in current use, that's right.
Anybody have anything else?
If not, I'll pass these down to you. There is the two main ones and two or three debit cards. Yes. Fourteen thousand, zero, six, eight, point, three, nine. Right, I'm still learning after thirteen years. And speaking of payroll, there it is.
Town manager's report.
Thank you, Alicia. In, on the West Creek Road project, after the completion of the contractor's work to grind up the asphalt on the southern end of the road, the town highway crew added some stone to build up the road, graded the road and rolled it for compaction. As we've discussed, we will look for ways to find the resources to pave this portion of the road, hopefully for next construction season. But as I say, we are starting the budgeting process this fall, so hopefully we can factor that in. Wilk paving has completed this year's paving work for the town. They resurfaced Markowski Road, Hitchcock Road, Adams Road, Mountain View and River Street. As usual, the highway crew quickly followed up by laying down stone shoulders and working on driveway transition points. The highway foreman has been in touch with line striping companies and we hope to get this work soon, done soon. On Monday, August 16th, contractor performed chip sealing operations on the unpaved portion of Oxbow Road, and that was an interesting process to observe, where they had a layer of half inch stone, asphalt emulsion, another layer of stone and more asphalt, and then a final, a final layer of stone on top, but compaction after each layer, kind of like putting down layers of a sandwich. So we'll see how it holds up and see how our pilot program did. Maybe we can think about using it elsewhere if it's successful. Hopefully, at the very least, it'll keep the dust down, which was the primary goal there. The grant-funded stormwater project to be sided at the rear of the firehouse parcel is moving forward with the regional planning commission having recently hired Masterson Excavating in Bristol to do the work sometime before November 1st. Stay tuned for further information as it becomes available. We're familiar with Masterson. They installed a couple of box culverts in East Pittsford about six or seven years ago and did a fine job. The town has received payment in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents from the American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA. That's half of the amount that we're expecting. Another payment in the same amount is expected for next year. In addition, the state has persuaded the federal government to redirect one hundred and twenty million dollars in money that had been earmarked for Vermont counties, redirected that to the towns of Vermont. So we are anticipating learning soon as to how much additional funding the town might receive in these additional ARPA funds. More good news.
Yeah.
The Sullivan and Powers folks will be in town from September 7th through the 10th to perform their annual audit of the town's books. On Friday, September 10th at noon, the town plans to host its annual staff appreciation picnic at the rec center. Hopefully, the audit is done by then. We'll certainly invite the auditors if that'll put them in a better mood. It was canceled last year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The town has received the results of a one-week traffic study of Hollister Quarry Road performed by the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. We had asked for that for several reasons, one of which was a neighbor or two concerned about vehicles they believed were traveling at high rates of speed. There is now a zoning proceeding pending which touches on traffic and other issues up in that area. So the board either can ask that I put the matter on the agenda for a possible discussion of adjusting the speed limit in that area, or the board might want to wait and see how things play out with that pending zoning matter before we get into that issue.
I'd hold off.
I think so. I think that would be my recommendation. Thank you. The solar, there's a solar project apparently on the, on the offing, in the offing for Adams Road at 574 Adams Road. The town has received word of a planned solar array. The town manager has requested presentations by the would-be developer from both, before both the planning commission and the select board, and they've agreed to try to arrange that. So stay tuned for that.
When's the picnic?
Saturday, I'm sorry, Friday, September 10th at noon. There'll be a memo coming.
All right.
I just want to say, West Creek Road is a hundred times better. So if anybody complains about it being dirt, there's something wrong with them because it's, it's probably, it's as smooth as the paving that was done on that other section, which isn't all that smooth, but it's, it's good. They did a good job.
Nice.
Thanks. Appreciate hearing that. I'll pass on the word. That's my impression as well. I took the drive. It seems like toward the Proctor end, maybe there's not been as much traffic or compaction.
Well, that corner.
Yeah.
The corner is a little, it's a little loose.
I think with time.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Chip seal, chip sun, how long a strip did that, see, did that go from the black top to the other black top that goes up the hill?
Yeah, I think, I think it covered the entire unpaved portion.
I haven't been up there, so, yeah. This is kind of an experiment anyway.
I think so, yeah. It's a cost-effective one. Let's hope it turns out to be a good product.
It may work out well.
Any select board member remarks? No?
Um, no, other than, well, I gotta think, no, other than we had a special meeting at regional planning last night. I was there for part of it, but I had to be back here for BCA. Talked about Casella's solar panel in the gravel pit, and it was just a letter one in favor of, so.
Oh, okay. All right. Any public comment? All right, let's skip to new business. Jason, since you're already on, we can discuss the coin drop for the fire department.
Yeah, so as vice president of the Nick Wackett Homes Company, I thought I'd come before you tonight and ask permission for you guys to allow us to move forward with the state process in, in having a coin drop for the fire department in lieu of not being able to have the haunted house because of COVID. You know, as I, as I thought about this, there are a lot of other organizations that do coin drops, and being one of those organizations and seeing what it takes, really, the fire department has to be a part of every coin drop, and they're doing, helping with coin drops for everybody else, but they're not doing one for themselves. And in this time where we can't have the haunted house, I just feel like this would be a good time for them to do one for themselves. I've run it by Chief Hempel. I've run it by past Chief Hooker, and we all agree that we think it would be a good idea, but we'd like to get your lesson on it as well. And we'd like to have that the October 23rd would be our first choice, and as a second choice, it'd be October 30th, from nine to one, those would be the choices that we would prefer to do something. The 23rd was our first choice just because the tractor parade's going on and we got to give them the coin drop, and then the tractor parade, we kind of tied off under one sort of bigger event.
Question, do we know what time the tractor parade will be coming through town?
I don't know.
Kelly found it before, long before I did.
I just wonder, is, is the fact of the, that the tractor parade might be going down a stretch of Route 7 a problem?
Begins at one o'clock.
Oh, well, there you go.
Done.
I know, what was the time?
Well, the tractor parade is only gonna be.
Yep, yeah.
What day, or what time was the coin drop?
Nine to one.
Nine to one. The parade starts at one, so it would just forward and another one.
Yeah, we're thinking nine to one, but you know, if you'd rather we do nine to one and.
I think it'd be fine. We just, yeah, we stop when they start.
Yeah.
The only, the only other issue is the fact that two weeks earlier on the 9th, there will be a Humane Society coin drop, but that doesn't seem to be a problem.
Yeah, that's fine.
State have anything to say about it?
Yeah, they need to hear from the, from the town that we, that we approve it, and we need to also provide Chief Warfel's signature on a state form. But Jason will want to be in touch with Brian Sanderson at the Vermont Agency of Transportation. I can give you his contact info, Jason, and he can tell you what the, where to get the form and when to submit it.
Yeah, I actually have the, yeah, I have the form.
Okay.
And you pointed out some previous that we did for my organization, and I actually worked with Eric Helsom.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, I just, we just need your permission to move forward with the application process and, and then see what the state has to say.
Got it.
Right in there.
Motion to approve the coin drop for October 23rd from nine to one.
I just have a question. When is the libraries?
That's coming up.
Much shorter, closer, much sooner. I'm just thinking of the ones that have come through.
Yep.
I think that's.
In September, I think.
September, yeah.
I think.
Rather be sure that.
I think so.
We should really have a calendar here where we write stuff down.
I know, it should be right here, yeah.
September 28th? August 28th.
August 28th, oh, good. All right, so we're good.
Yep.
All right, so we had a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Jason.
Hey, thank you very much. I don't want to be known as the coin drop kid.
Now you're gonna be.
Yeah, now you are.
We'll put you on the middle of the road in your wheelchair.
He's buggy in his helmet.
Or on your crotches and then you jump all the way.
Or at least a championship, right?
There you go.
All right, see you later, thanks guys.
Bye.
See ya.
All right. How about we do, discuss plans to resume annual tax sale process?
Yes. On every year before the pandemic, the town engaged in a process to prevent property tax delinquencies from getting out of hand by way of holding an annual tax sale. And generally, we sent out letters to those people who were more than two years delinquent with a balance of more than a thousand dollars, letting them know of their delinquency and that if not paid within the town's policy on tax sales, they would be subject to a tax sale. Three times out of four, those people come forward and make necessary payments, and occasionally we have maybe two or three properties that make it all the way to a tax sale. And again, that has been the method by which the town's kept its books in pretty good shape and kept delinquencies from getting too big, which has happened in other towns where they don't have the discipline of a tax sale annually. So anyway, we held off on that last year, obviously due to the pandemic and the economic impact of the pandemic. But one might argue that now we've, that we've returned to something close to normal and that there's been substantial aid provided to people in various ways, that the town of Pittsford might want to resume the practice of tax sales.
How many people right now are subject to that?
Linda told me that for now, it looks like about a dozen, and generally, that's about the same number we always have.
Yeah, okay.
Seems like we write the letters to the dozen or so. We get compliance with seven or eight or nine. We have a sale scheduled, and then maybe one or two get resolved on the eve of, and maybe one or two are subject to sale. And even if there is a sale, the taxpayer has a year to redeem it.
Okay.
I make a motion to go back to having our tax sale.
Just to bear all the town.
Okay. Yeah, it's unfortunate, but it has to happen.
Yeah, you do, but.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's see. All right, so discussion of process for recruitment of new town manager.
Yes. As you know, Madam Chair, in executive session at the last meeting, I announced my plans to step down as town manager in March. And the general view of the board seemed to be that we'd like to at least explore a partnership with VLCT, who might be able to help the board recruit and hire a replacement. In tonight's packet, you'll see that they plan to issue a proposal soon and that they hope to be able to present it to the board at a September meeting. Meanwhile, they've suggested that we can do some homework by looking at our job description, pay and benefit package, and we can also probably look at what other town managers in similarly sized towns are earning through a compilation that VLCT issues annually. So for the next packet, I'll be happy to have that for you all to look at and digest, and that'll kind of help inform our discussion with VLCT.
One thing that's come to my mind and I'd just have it mentioned for consideration is, one of our town managers, I don't know if it was you, John, or if it was Kathleen, but we put an ad in the Rutland Herald, and one of the town managers, was it before you were on the board, Tom?
I'm trying to think. It was.
We had one town manager that we hired through an ad in the Rutland Herald. I believe that, I may be wrong, but I think that the VLCT we've used then before, you do a good job, I think, is a minimum of $10,000 fee.
I don't know. They haven't quoted us a proposal yet.
I may be wrong on that, but if we, as a thought, if we put an ad in a local paper, Rutland Herald or Burton Free Press or whatever, for a week or so, nothing comes of it. Do we have, we have time enough, I think, to do this and not cut ourselves short. We don't want to get into, box into a corner for time.
The, the idea of the VLCT consultation is not just about advertising position, it's also vetting candidates, recommending who they think would be the strongest ones to interview, and then helping negotiate, I think, the terms of a contract. So maybe we can hold your idea for now, Joe, see what VLCT proposes, and then you can all, you can always look at that as a plan B of doing it kind of yourself.
Yeah.
I think, as I recall, they, they kind of narrow it down and give the board a short list.
They start with a large list.
I was gonna say, they also must have a wide.
A lot of choices, yeah.
But ultimately, Joe, you are the customer, so you could customize this process as a board however you wish, either with or without VLCT. But even if we work with VLCT, you can tell them that you'd like to maybe take a slightly different approach than they're proposing. So it's not take it or leave it.
Right.
I don't believe.
No, but I think we should at least see what their proposal is. I mean, if it's outrageously expensive and, you know, then we.
Hopefully, they save us the money in salary for a few years. That's due to that.
We can't dilly-dally around forever because our time will run out.
When did you say they're, they're gonna?
They said September, they'd be ready to meet us, either the first meeting
Oh, okay.
or the second one. It's the first or the 15th. I think probably before the packets go out.
Oh, I know.
So by, by next Friday, when the packets go out, I would imagine there'd be a proposal there to look at.
Okay, great.
And some research I will put together for you.
I think maybe one of the things, I mean, we're looking, we were looking for economic development when we were looking for a rec director, and that didn't work out. Maybe we need to.
Can be tied in.
Incorporate that into our town manager, what we're looking for.
For sure. One thing you might want to consider, we are gonna have some savings this year, this year, from Linda Drummond's part-time status, and Alicia had asked about that going forward. I asked Linda Drummond about that, and she said, hey, maybe a new town manager who hasn't worked with her or whatever, might want a full-time assistant, like has been the tradition here.
Oh.
So that's something where you might have, you might have savings if a new town manager didn't feel he needed forty hours, but that'd be probably a discussion to have with the candidate that you zero in on.
Sure, yeah, that's a good point.
Got some thoughts here. I'll take your session.
A lot of doors open right at this point.
That's right.
That we have to consider.
And you do have seven months, nearly, nearly seven months.
The thought has gone through my mind, I had a conversation with, oh, he passed on now, but he was filled in as a town manager here, a little oil there.
Don Nicholas?
Don Nicholas, yeah. And he, in one of our visits that we had, he led me to believe that a town manager's job for Pittsford didn't necessarily have to be a full-time job, although you have some real good comments to make on that, that I don't know if it's possible that his Proctor, if there was any possibility of sharing a town manager with another town such as Proctor.
Well, they just got there themselves as a new town manager.
Just along that line, you were, I think, Chittenden, because they're considering, I believe, getting a town manager. So along that line, there's, you think that's a.
There's also, there's also something less than a town manager, which is a town administrator.
That's right.
And if there's a real active select board who really wants to roll their sleeves up and kind of take charge of it, you can have an administrator who's more like just the person who executes what you've decided should be done. That's a model that's available, and other towns have used it. Rutland Town has used it. Proctor used to have one, Proctor used to have one, and they decided ultimately they wanted more of a manager. So that's something also that VLCT could discuss with you, those options.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Now, Middlebury, correct me if I'm wrong, if you folks know me, it's different, but Kathleen, she worked up there before she came here, and she was some, some sort of administrator, like you mentioned, if I remember right.
I think she was an assistant, I think she was an assistant to the town manager.
Right, was that the bigger town, and they had a lot more going on.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So there are various options.
Absolutely, absolutely.
She came here and then went to Killing Creek, and then backed to Middlebury.
Appreciate your suggestions.
Oh, yeah.
You've been in the, in the seats.
I think, I think what you'll see in the next packet is, along with whatever VLCT is proposing, is excerpts from an annual survey of all the towns that have town managers and/or administrators. And you can kind of see for yourself what, what size town seems to do what, and what size town or sophistication of town pays this kind of benefit versus that kind of benefit. Those will all be helpful background for you. And that's also, I think, the kind of stuff VLCT is there to prepare to advise you about as well.
Yeah, all right.
That's their business.
Right.
So to speak.
All right, moving on to COVID updates.
Yes. I certainly don't want to jam anything down anybody's throat. We're living fraught political times, of course, where everything is political. But as you may have heard, the guidance from the CDC, Centers for Disease Control, is now that they recommend that people, even those that are fully vaccinated, within counties of substantial or high transmission rates for COVID. of substantial or high transmission rates for COVID, wear face masks while indoors in public settings. Unfortunately, Rutland County is now among those counties, as it is now experiencing a substantial rate of transmission, according to their website. Therefore, you may wish to recommend that residents and staff wear face masks while indoors on town property. If you do so, you can always withdraw the recommendation if and when transmission rates decline. Some experts I've heard suggest that this might happen by early to mid-September. So anyway, I've just attached what we could use if the board wanted to issue some kind of a recommendation notice, and I've included the website that shows Rutland County as a county of substantial transmission.
And for confirmed cases.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I heard. It's not official. We're with the Academy. They've suspended, closed it down a week early. Did you hear that, John?
I did not.
That's about 5:00 tonight, I heard that. I don't know if it's true or not, but...
Well, that's funny, because I was usually, Friday about 4:30 is when the parade ends up, and it was today or yesterday, right? They left early, so that makes sense.
I did ask Brandon West Rutland and Proctor what they're doing.
I've noticed.
Didn't hear from Brandon. Wes Rutland doesn't have a meeting till the 30th of the month, and Stan Wilber says not as yet, but he will look into it, as to whether they think that's appropriate in Proctor.
Well, it's a tough question, really, because...
I think at some point, you have to take the politics out of it, though.
Hear somebody's sense to the damn...
The medical people, that's my thought. I don't know.
What are the feelings of those of you here in the office?
I really haven't discussed it with them, and again, all I'm wondering is if the board wants to recommend it in keeping with what CDC is asking.
Personally, people coming into the building, I think they should be asked to, to wear a mask. I, I'm not so concerned if the girls are sitting there by themselves, not wearing it, they're in your office, but I think when the general public comes in, there should be a sign there, you saying, please wear your mask.
There's an issue also about, you know, group gatherings, like I know there was BCA here, planning commission will stop zooming soon, and we might want to at least let them know that the guidance, either from the CDC or from the board...
They can zoom now.
Is that they, is that they are recommended to wear. It's not, it's not too heavy.
Not mandated, but recommended.
Planning commission is no longer going to zoom. They don't have an operator, and they're, they're fine with proceeding in person, but we just had that discussion today. I told Mark that as long as we're not a substantial transmission county, I don't see that it's needed to do anything, but if the board wants to follow CDC guidance, we can recommend to the staff and to the boards and commissions that it's recommended that you wear a mask.
I hate it myself.
Well, but I, I mean, I don't have a problem with putting, right now, a sign, it's recommended that you per the guidelines and explain Rutland County, I mean, explain it out.
They're signing commuters tonight on his doors and in the store.
Okay, I didn't know that either.
Yeah, that's tonight.
They were here on the weekends.
Here's, here's what I had in mind. Rutland County, including the town of Pittsburgh, is now among several Vermont counties experiencing a substantial rate of COVID transmission. Therefore, pursuant to CDC guidance, the Pittsburgh Select Board has voted to recommend that all residents wear a face mask while indoors in public spaces, even those who are fully vaccinated. Please stay healthy and safe. Thank you.
Yeah, for the next two weeks, it's gonna be criticized. I'll make that motion if we adopt that policy, the recommendation.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Then ratify approval of assessor error and omission.
Yes. After our last meeting at which we tabled the Blanchard error as an omission due to prevailing confusion, we asked, we asked the assessor to clarify, she did, I circulated it, we did have approvals from Alicia, Dave, and Pelkey, which was good enough to move forward, that's in a majority, but I thought for purposes of transparency that we should just have the full board ratify it in the minutes.
Yep. All right, that makes sense. That's why I was confused. I'm like, is that where you did that?
Under cover of darkness.
Well, I'll make a motion that we ratify.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Update in delivery of new highway truck. Did it get delivered?
No, it's still sitting there.
I saw it today.
Yep, I saw it today, too.
We've narrowed down the issue of, of a extended warranty. He said that that's all he needed to finish the paperwork. Chad is away this week, maybe he's been trying to hook up with Chad, so I'm hoping next week we'll have a truck on hand. Stay tuned. I wouldn't have put it on the agenda if I had such a feeble report. I'd have some news for you.
In the meantime, he was in there truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, at this point, it's all winter, I mean, it's...
Yeah, wait till fall time, I don't care.
Yeah. All right, that was anticlimactic. Moving on, update on Pittsburgh Day.
I, yes. The third and final planning session took place last week on August 12th. We had a good turnout and lots of enthusiasm is building. We will have, in the next two editions of the Brandon Reporter and in the newsletter that'll be out next week, a schedule of events, and of course, just for those watching or interested in this at home, there'll be a 5K road race and a kids' fun run in the morning, a cornhole tournament from 12 to 2:00. Then things really kick off with the silent auction and basket raffle beginning at 2:00. Silent auction will be open till 6:00, basket raffle till 5:00, and we need to thank Barb Hooker, Sandy Loughlin, Lori Hempel for the silent auction, and also that same group and Katie Davis for the basket raffle. There'll be a car show from 2:00 to 6:00, and Darren and Tyler Loughlin are sinking their teeth into that. The library will be providing snow cones and a photo booth in the afternoon. Kids' activities will include a bouncy house, dunking booth, slip and slide. Liz Willis will have some young lambs, I think, in a petting zoo. The Joey Fun Biz gentlemen will have a magic show immediately followed by balloon art. The 40th Army Band will be performing between 2:00 and 3:00. There'll be a helicopter flying in the neighborhood and hopefully landing, depending on whether we've given them a big enough parking area, landing strip, at around 3:00. Woodchuck's Revenge, which of course consists of Peter and Christina Katie, will be performing at 3:15 to 4:30. There'll be a square dancing demonstration from 4:30 to 5:00 with the Cast Off Eights Club. Resolution Band, featuring our own Bob Berardo, will play from 5:00 to 6:15 PM. Satin and Steel will get things really cranking at 6:30 to 9:00. We'd like to thank Omea for that. We'll have fireworks at 9:00 through CNC fireworks, and then we'll have a DJ, Amanda Relier, who works with The Jam Man, will be there from 9:30 to closing. As we've told everybody before, there'll be no evening meal cert, but several food trucks will be on site with tables and chairs provided for people to have picnics. Donation for goods and services for the silent auction are welcome. Contact Barb Hooker, Sandy Loughlin, Lori Hempel, or even our own Helen McKinley. Proceeds of the event are going to the town's fire department and the Christmas for Kids Fund. If there's rain, the fireworks will be held the next evening, September 5 at 9:00. And as always, anybody who wishes to volunteer helping set up or break down, setting up Friday afternoon evening, breaking down Sunday morning, please get in touch with me, and I'll put you on the list.
Good weather.
Yes. That's why we moved it to September.
We gotta look out one of these years.
Did you want to add anything, Tom?
No, I just think, I think the Fire Department's gonna raise the flag with the 40th Army Band, singing, playing the National Anthem at the opening at 2:00, because that's when they're scheduled to play, so that'll be kind of neat.
By the band, by the way, the band will be in town Wednesday or Thursday next week for just a few minutes to look over where we plan to have them.
I got your email.
Well, that's it until 7:30. So I guess we just take a break.
Yes, well, we can go into executive session.
Executive session, then we'll be done.
All right.